Good evening, everyone. I'd like to follow our meeting's order for Thursday of July 13, 2023. Looking for a motion to excuse the board members. To move. Second. Yeah, the first and the second. Mrs. Enriquez-Cumple?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Moving on to 1.03, adoption of the agenda.
We adopt the agenda as presented.
A second. Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Enriquez-Cumple?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We will now have our board meetings.
(laughing). (inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to 1.05. I'd like to report that the Board of Education will be in session on June 6 and June 8, 2023, for the purpose of a discussion of personal agenda items. 1.06, public comments. I did not receive any public comments. So we will move on. Moving on to our president's report. In the spirit of unity, equality, and freedom, the Rittner School District proudly celebrated Juneteenth, a day that holds immense historical significance for our nation. All district buildings and offices were closed on Monday, June 19. On June 15, district administrators and staff hosted a Juneteenth lunch and learn at Rittner High School. Participants shared lunch, learned about the history of Juneteenth, and answered Black History trivia questions. Rittner High School student leaders Kimberly Kimani and Alexander Robinson narrated a special video that was shared with our community on the Juneteenth holiday. We are proud of our staff and students for embracing the values of unity, education, and empowerment during the Juneteenth holiday. As we prepare for the upcoming school year, we have several important things I just wanted to share with you all this evening. We have new employee orientation that is August 7 through the 11th. We will host our summer graduation ceremony prior to our board meeting on Thursday, August 10. We welcome teachers back on Monday, August 14. Transition Day for kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade students is Thursday, August 17. The first day of school is Monday, August 21. Our annual Black and Orange Day celebration and Back to School Bash takes place on Saturday, August 26, at Rittner High School. Our annual Hall of Fame induction ceremony will take place at 6:00 p.m. on Friday, September 15. On Saturday, September 16, we will celebrate homecoming weekend with a parade at 9:00 a.m., followed by the football game against Fox High School at 1:00 p.m. at Warfield. Any questions, Tony? We will move on to our superintendent's report, 2.02.
Thank you. So, Board members, happy to announce 2023 Hall of Fame class. We have three Rittner alums who will be inducted into the Hall of Fame and one lifetime achievement award recipient. Lifetime Achievement Award is a person who's made significant contribution but was not a graduate or is not a graduate of Rittner High School. So, the inductees in 2023, Ms. Charla Lord, class of '81, Emmy award-winning journalist, renowned communications professional; Dr. William, Reverend Dr. William Gancy, class of '64, a revered minister in the St. Louis region; Mr. Larry Ziegler, class of '68, decorated U.S. Marine, who served admirably in the Vietnam War; and Dr. Martha Ackman. Dr. Ackman received the Lifetime Achievement Award. She is a nationally recognized journalist and author who founded KRHS, the first student-run high school radio station at RHS. So, the Hall of Fame induction takes place 6:00 p.m. on Friday, September 15, as Ms. Clever Jones has cheered, in the lower lobby and in the auditorium. So, Board members look forward to celebrating the incoming class with all of you. Invitations will be sent out a little bit later in August. The Hall of Fame was established in 1997 to honor graduates who have demonstrated professional accomplishments, involvement in civic matters, and community service. We are in front of the Wall of Fame tonight. There's 103 members that have been inducted into the Hall of Fame. We have 11 Lifetime Achievement Award recipients. Look forward to celebrating this new class with all of you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We will move on to 2.03, MSBA and NSBA report. Mrs. Enriquez-Cumple?
(inaudible).
There's the video.
In addition to the Missouri School Boards Association report, we begin with a look at MSBA Summer Summit held in print since June 16 and 17. This summit began with an inspiring keynote presentation from Dr. Japlin Sandel. Dr. Jackie is an accomplished school principal who has become famous for her straightforward "why not" attitude, which has led to dramatic improvements in some of Southern California's most under-resourced schools. Her... Missouri School Boards Association Board Report, Dr. Japlin Sandel. Dr. Jackie is an accomplished school principal who has become famous for her straightforward "why not" attitude, which has led to dramatic improvements in some of Southern California's most under-resourced schools. Her passion for guiding young people has garnered national recognition. Dr. Jackie said that in addition to the first four Cs, community, collaboration, capacity, and connection, there is one more C that is critical to student success.
You have to be creative. You have to be innovative. You have to be different. You have to think about how do we recreate what we've done to make something fresh and new happen? Because we are serving scholars who are innovative. They were born into innovation. They don't even know what we did. They don't think the way we did. They're going to have jobs that have not even been created yet. So, we cannot afford to use old tactics on innovative youngsters. Not only that, innovative young people who are working around with us. We have to be brave enough to say, "We've got to do something different." Because if we're not creative, we're going to lose the first four Cs.
The Summer Summit also featured an awards luncheon, recognizing outstanding students such as the 2023 statewide Belcher Scholarship winner, Jean Tal Legba from Up Republic High School. The luncheon was also an opportunity to celebrate board members who have achieved additional levels of board certification beyond the basic state requirement levels and have achieved the designation of Advanced Master or Distinguished Certified Board Member. At the conclusion of the summit during the delegate assembly, Ruth Johnson of the Raymore Peculiar School District was sworn in as president of the Missouri School Boards Association after serving as president-elect for the past year. She told board members attending the summit, "It's important to understand the challenges our schools face right now, but it's also important to celebrate accomplishments."
As we look ahead into this next year, we will face many of the same challenges that we've had in recent times. We must, however, look forward, be better, and focus on our why.
MSBA state officers elected during the delegate assembly meeting held at the summit include President-elect Pavy Quest and Mary of the Ozark R6 School District and Vice President Jonathan Russell of the Neosho School District. As the summit concluded, Senator Carla Asner delivered a resolution originating from the Senate floor recognizing the outstanding contributions of outgoing MSBA President, Amy Murphy.
Every once in a while, you have an opportunity to recognize leadership and to recognize people's contribution and just the giving nature of time and resource and energy for something that, obviously, you're not paying for, but because it matters to the heart and it matters to the children in this district and across the state. And I want to say thank you so much for your leadership.
MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming November. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The advocacy committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines MSBA's positions on issues. Those position statements express to legislators, policymakers, the public, and the media where MSBA stands on issues affecting rural schools. Be part of the process by reviewing the current positions, discussing them with your fellow school board members, and proposing changes. Delegates will vote on proposed changes at the fall delegate assembly this November in Kansas City. Registration will be open starting July 10 for the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials to be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a lineup of general session speakers you won't want to miss. That's it for this one. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in August for the next MSBA board report.
(inaudible). I did have a question about the position statements. Have... I know at one point in time there was some dialogue about potentially making some recommendations. Is that still... is that still something that you're seeking feedback on?
Yeah, so I had talked to... Yes, and I will get more information for next meeting if that's appropriate. Because I know that UC, University City, some of the board members there, we can maybe collaborate together on some of those positions. So, yeah, I'll reach out to make sure that I have a better answer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to make sure that everybody has it in their mind, because I'm really excited. Because hopefully, by November 2nd through the 4th, I'll be through my second surgery, and I am going to Kansas City with you guys.
Yay!
We got to make it happen.
Yay! (inaudible). Because I think I'm going to be just like...
My kind of...
(laughing). It's our deadline. (laughing). I'll send it to you. (laughing). Thank you, Mrs. Enriquez-Cumple. So, we will move on to 2.04, Special School District Report. Mr. Robyn?
Thank you for your question.
This says the next government council meeting is scheduled for September 25. Thank you. Moving on to our business items, 3.01, Alternative Methods of Instruction Plan for Income and Weather. Mrs. Edna McGillen?
Good evening, Board members. I am presenting this information on behalf of Dr. Stewart in the CNI team. So, this is our update around AMI, or Alternative Methods of Instruction. And our vision, as we are aware, we want our students to lead lives of personal integrity and fulfillment. We want to make sure that our students are prepared for what's beyond our 13 years here in Rittner. And with our equity statement, we want to make sure that the barriers to high levels of learning are removed, resourced, allocated, so students get what they need, and that we provide a great education for our students. And that includes on those days when the weather does not necessarily agree with us bringing students in person in the buildings. So, just a reminder of what AMI is. This is Alternative Methods of Instruction. So, our students will receive... They receive the full attendance for 36 hours. It's a learning plan for our students for short-term school closures. We limit it to 36 hours due to the exceptional or emergency circumstances. So, if there's a gas, severe weather, some other something, this would be a way that our students can continue to receive their education. And it's approved by the state on a yearly basis. And our students have to turn in assignments to receive credit. It's not just that they show up on Zoom. They actually have to turn in work to receive credit for that time. It includes communication on purpose and expectations, clear expectations of lesson materials, instructions on how feedback is given to the students. We want to make sure that there's equitable access to materials and the internet. We do have hotspots available, and students are aware of that. Families are aware that we have hotspots available. There's communication with the teachers. The teachers are able to provide support for their students through Google Classroom, Facebook, email, phone, and she can use Google Voice to communicate, and then also support IDPs through this program. So, this is what the current... the school year that just passed, this is what the time looks like. So, there were two hours for early childhood, two hours and 45 minutes for elementary and middle schools, and then four hours and 10 minutes at the high school level. The principals... Excuse me. The principals received feedback on the need to equalize the time between the elementary and secondary levels. Input was given about the secondary schedule to try to figure out how to make it more equitable. The high school principals sent a survey to the teachers to get some input around those AMI days. And so, we are looking at a slightly different schedule for next year. And so, next year, what we're proposing is two hours for the school for early childhood, two hours and 45 minutes at the elementary and middle level, and then... I'm sorry, four hours and 45 minutes, not two hours. Four hours and 45 minutes at the elementary and middle level, and then four hours and 40 minutes at the high school. And I think I said two hours previously. It's been four hours at the elementary and middle levels, four hours and 45 minutes. So, this is what the schedule would look like for this upcoming school year. This next piece... So, in order to collect the terms, we talked about this. We have to have multiple methods for determining completion of activities, which is the students turning in the actual work. And the teachers will work with the office professionals around that work completion. This next piece around the survey results is not new. This is part of that survey that the Communications Office sent out last year around AMI. And so, this is just a reminder of how we got to where we are. So, you'll see here, this is just the same piece that we talked about last year. The questions were in English and Spanish. We have 1,482 responses. And you'll see the breakdown there of parents, Rittner staff, SSB staff, and students who provided feedback around the survey.
Could I jump in for one second?
Yes.
This survey data... Actually, this part actually is new.
Okay.
We test... And this is... I appreciate you stepping up for Denise. We test this question each year, and this question was put out in May.
Okay.
And just the why for that, Board members. I was interested in a combination of three and three, three traditional snow days, three virtual, and got the sense that the community wasn't necessarily in favor of that. So, I asked Doug to test and put another survey out. So, I apologize for not making you wear that up.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you. So, nearly half of the respondents prefer to have six AMI days, which is what we've done before. Staff members were most supportive of all AMI days, with nearly 60% preferring that. And then, families were most likely to support the traditional snow days, but of those responses, 41.5% of the families said that they prefer all AMI days. So, of the students, 46% of the students preferred all AMI, the middle school being the most supportive of that approach. With the comments, having that stat last day of school was important, so that way we can kind of know when the school year is going to end as opposed to if we have traditional snow days, the date adjusts. And then, the comments also indicated that there's a concern that students might not have internet access for their computers. But again, as we said before, it's being communicated to the families to reach out to the district that they are aware that we do have hotspots available. So, students need a hotspot, we have access to them. So, here are the results of the survey. The overall, how we would like Rittner to use those AMI days. You can look at those results. And so, based on the survey, based on the feedback, we are proposing and asking the board, we would like to recommend six AMI virtual learning days for the 23 and 24 school year.
So, it'd be all virtual? Board members, also, at some point in the future, likely later in the year, this idea of hotspots and access at home. As a part of the ESRC plan, municipal Wi-Fi is one of the strategies in the plan. So, this idea of AMI full virtual can be a long-term solution because access to hotspots from time to time can be an issue. Having municipal Wi-Fi, which is a strategy where access is put on the telephone poles, and if you're a Rittner family, you'll get high-speed access that we're able to provide. That's what will make this approach of full virtual sustainable over the years. As I said, my interest was to do three and three, three traditional, three virtual. Because of last year, I've made that decision based on feedback that on Friday, when the forecast changed, on Monday, we got feedback that students, nurse, and staff were prepared for a full virtual day. My thinking was having three and three would allow us to be flexible around that. It's clear across the board, the survey data doesn't necessarily support that, so that we would just be messaging, starting the second week of November, people need to be prepared at all times for the potential for virtual. K and one, we don't necessarily take devices home. We'd be working with teachers for hard copy packets. And because attendance is counted based on work completion, we're able to capture attendance even if students would complete a hard copy packet.
So, with that, if you have any questions, I'm going to write them down for that.
I just want to make sure that we have... That we're clear out there to our parents that if we have to go with the other way, that those aren't required made-up days, so we don't have the issue that we had this year.
Yeah, and so, there's a recommendation, a policy edit that we're going to be talking about, Policy IC, in just a bit, that clarifies that if ever a traditional day is used, that that would need to be made up on a day of not where student attendance isn't normally. What we're saying now is we would only be using virtual time. The decision I made last year would not be a decision that we'd be making going forward. It'd all be virtual. And I think the policy could help to clear that up. That's a good question.
Madam President?
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Group 1.02, CSIP, M66, coming back to the screen.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Gilbry.
I agree.
To our community tonight, we want to provide an update on M66 as well as CSIP. As you all know, we're under a new cycle and have been first iteration of that with our points outlined most last year. So, we're trying to get ahead of some things to ensure that we receive the points that are due to us. As part of the M66 process, we were required to ensure that our vision, as well as vision, were a part of our CSIP, and those things were added. As we look at our CSIP, we want to continue to ensure that we invest in education and learning, supporting students, as well as teacher advocacy. The purpose of the report tonight is to provide an update of M66 standards as well as the CSIP process, and then sharing a brief, high-level overview of the CSIP. So, as you all may recall, there are six standards of the M66, and we chose to focus on three of those standards for our building-level CSIPs. Those standards are involved, that's in fact, in teaching and learning, collaborative climate and culture, as well as having access. And one of the reasons for that is we were able to map those three standards to our current CSIP goals. So, we wanted to make sure that we kept our CSIP goals and look at how they could best fit the goals that we currently have. So, the first goal, our academic goal, we mapped that to effective teaching and learning, just ensuring that we work with our students as well as our teachers and all of those that work within the district to demonstrate the improvement in their performance. Our second goal is our college and career readiness goal. And we're looking at ensuring that every student, especially a graduate of high school, is prepared for college or career. We back that to equity and access under M66. And our last goal, which is our attendance goal, that's our 990 goal. As you all may recall, under M66, at first, it was in the book. It was out of the book or the manual. And now, it's in there, points, if you would, that are assigned to that to ensure that we keep that goal as well. So, in looking at possible potential CSIP engagement opportunities reflected on last year, there are site-based CSIP meetings, as well as our principals and our instructional coaches, CNI team, will have the opportunity to engage in CSIP process during the POCs. Also, importantly, there are possible times that this will come to be forth of the board, and you all are so involved in our daily dialogues, which I'll talk about later on. There are monthly administrative meetings where that CSIP will always guide the work that goes on within the place, within that framework, not just the district CSIP, but those building-level CSIPs as well. Those documents are, in fact, I would say dynamic documents, and we'll talk about that later on. So, there's always an opportunity to update and refine as evidenced by some of the work we did in our daily dialogues last year. Our monthly administrative support administrative meetings, those CSIPs guide the conversation there, daily dialogues. Those dates on the string that have been scheduled, November 1st, January 10th, and March 6th. Those are the three days that we have us down. And then, last, we have our state initiative. There's another opportunity to engage in the work around our CSIP. So, why CSIP engagement? One of the reasons is it engages our school-based team as well as our district administrators, and you all in the process of continuous improvement. Just looking at the goals that are in place as well, and the strategies that we're looking at to ensure that we're getting the results that are intended. Firmly believing in success by design, not by chance, of what's working, what's not working, looking at the penalties worth. The triple D events create specific pivot points for strategy. So, looking at what's going on, hearing from other building leaders to see what they're doing, opportunities for one might go back and make adjustments to their CSIP. And then, also, providing a structured support for problem solving and support today review and analysis. So, some of the things that we'll be able to do there is looking at the attendance, looking at what's going on with our graduates from high school, making sure they were pointed in the direction that aligns to their four-year plan. And then, backing up, giving also to those ICAs as well, and looking at a foundation for school improvement efforts, ensuring that we're always in the mode of seeing how we can improve in all of the spaces that we support. Additionally, coordinate a structure for identifying organized strategies as well as resources. So, just making sure that those strategies or resources are allocated appropriately. And when coming together those daily dialogues, you might find that one building is doing something one way, and they have this set of resources, and another building doesn't. So, how do we make sure that we're streamlined and consolidating some of those resources so that our students are getting what they need, as well as our adults as well? Create a common mechanism to connect with related resources. And then, on this side, in the lines of process, we're ensuring as best possible how those for our students. And you all always hear me say, "Success by design, not by chance." So, what does that look like? Some of the work that we did would not have been possible without this planning committee. Melissa Pauli, Dr. Keisha Brakes at Hoover Elementary. Melissa works at our curriculum and instructional department. She's one of our instructional coaches. And last, and not least, Dr. Jennifer Singleton, School of Early Childhood. So, they did a lot of the structural work, we did a lot of structural work to ensure that some of the best things goes around the table as we work, endeavor to work with the building leaders as well as our department leaders in the mission. So, what are our next steps? Our initial draft of our CSIP, as well as the response to standards, and the CSIP planning document was submitted to DESI June 28. Dr.... Dr. It's called Doug, Mr. Brakes, as well as Ms. Jackson, helped with those efforts to ensure that those documents were submitted on time. So, you all remember, there are points associated with submitting documents on time. So, those documents were submitted and uploaded on the 28th, and they will do July 1st. Then, also, our building and department draft copies are due on the 25th of July. So, those, that's the entry ticket, if you would, for our Back to School retreat. The final draft of the CSIP is due on the 1st of October. And it's a final draft because we can always make updates and changes to what's of the state, is in fact, called the final draft. And reviewing and updating our data, and that's ongoing process, particularly in these months that we're in, July and August, making sure that our college and career readiness data is accurate as it is uploaded to the state. So, that's our ACT data, our AP data, our dual enrollment, dual credit data, things of that sort, SAT, ACT workings, and then our AP testing. that sort, SAT, ACT workings, and then our AP testing as well. Our graduation rate, we're always looking at that to make sure that those numbers are accurate and students are coded appropriately. And we work to make sure that the students that graduated are coded appropriately so we get credit for those at the state. Definitely trying to positively impact all of our graduation rates, that is the four, five, six, and seven year rate. But more effort is focused on that four year rate because we want our students graduating in those four years. We mentioned attendance, a lot of effort around attendance last year and then this year with the committee that the time is working with. So we want to continue to make sure that the data, that attendance system is correct and continue with some of those things in place that they discussed for this upcoming school years, they did last school year and the ICAP as well. And other data points that we'll be looking at to ensure accuracy. So that is a very high level, brief overview of M66 as well as CSET. At this hour, I ask for questions tonight.
I appreciate the work and the diligence to try to make sure that we are leaving some of this work and not so much just it being dictated to us and then getting the boys and different staff members in our district to build that out and what it looks like. Just, I know this is a high level overview, but when we're talking about M66 and there are some components that relate to the board of education, is there anything that we need to be aware of as far as like our part in this? Because I don't feel like necessarily previously that was the process or that was necessary. So are there things that we need to be aware of with the new changes?
Absolutely, definitely the engagement piece in the CSET and one of the standards, call it response to the standards, which is standard one leadership. There's a heavy emphasis on board involvement and development there. And under the comprehensive guidance they released, it's the engagement process in the CSET so that is to be done the last, you know, I believe it's four times per year quarterly is what they're calling for. So the engagement, at least you all do that at those triple D meetings and they will come before you with the approval of the final draft with the CSET.
We'll be prepared to share with you as we head up to October 1st for final submission. Be prepared to share with you and give feedback around that leadership standard number one. It's also superintendent board relationship is a component of it. And it's also board members continuing to professionally develop and grow through offerings and professional training. So we'll share the draft snapshot with you, get your feedback as we head towards October 1st.
Thank you. Is Matt still any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Number one to Group 103, M and J Proposal for Chromebooks, Dr. Bruce Green and Dr. Fred Hartman.
We'll be talking about the improvements to technology asset management. Our vision, the district, in partnership with parents and community, will develop leaders, recognize market excellence, which graduates who contribute to citizens, provide lives of personal integrity and fulfillment. Our mission is to ensure learning occurs in a supportive environment and enables every student to critically solve problems, develop the knowledge and skills necessary for success in our diverse and global society. All right, equity statement, resources are allocated to every student, it's what they need, courses, students, technology. Tree everyone with dignity and respect by valuing individual perspectives and cultural diversity. Students will see themselves, their culture represented, relative within the district. The teachers will embed cultural competence and cultural responsiveness, trauma-informed practices into their teaching, interactions with students. Asset management and tracking, current state, there are challenges with student chromebook tracking leading to losses and advice. In terms of deployment and collection, recording the transactions is inconsistent for school based on current tools, since current tools are really nothing more than spreadsheets. Every school does it their own way. Reporting is time consuming as indicated by office professionals. Of course, it's important for spreadsheets. Very difficult to work with those to use against other data such as Tyler information or Google information, Google has information on Google usage. You need to know that. The locations of our devices has warning spots. They can be in schools with students or at their desk. We have it all the time, tracking them and therefore knowing how many we have. There's an opportunity here to prevent students from collecting more than one chromebook. Student houses, students, they have computers and they issue a new one. We're not always sure they're returning more than one every business.
In addition to that, our parent state, so looking at recovering chromebooks from withdrawn students is a challenge. So some of the data points that we look at revolve around how many chromebooks were able to recover, how many were not. And I know some questions came up prior to this meeting. So we're looking at roughly 10% of those chromebooks, they go for, they go unaccounted for. I believe we have maybe 9,000 or so devices out there. So roughly, we're looking at about 900 with about 300 or 400 of those devices not being recovered at all. So you'll see some of the footage that's in here, recovered chromebooks from withdrawn students is a challenge. So students have withdrawn all the time. It's hard for us to get those chromebooks back, not because they come to the school and tell us that they're leaving. Sometimes they go wrong, we don't know if they're not coming back. And we do everything that we can within the school to see where students are, but that device goes unaccounted for, we have to replace. Our fines, the damage of lost chromebooks has got an opportunity. Again, as Dr. Pauli mentioned, when students lose a chromebook, they don't have a chromebook, they damaged a chromebook, we give students another chromebook. And there's some legal challenges that are involved with that. So we want to make sure that students have resources that they need, but sometimes, as I've already mentioned, students may have had two or three chromebooks within a year.
If I can speak on that just a minute, Dr. Green mentioned a little bit about there are some legal challenges. The way the law is interpreting chromebooks, it's the same thing as a textbook now. So the idea that we would administer a fine and we would not issue another chromebook until that fine is paid, is being interpreted as standing in the way of access to an education. We received a letter from Eastern Legal a year ago in May where there was a student that had damaged three devices. And the last device that was made unusable was within four days of the last day of the school year. So the school, which was one of middle schools, made the decision not to give the student the device for the last four days of school. And then a parent went for a legal challenge and we would have lost that legal challenge. So as you're hearing, the idea that, you know, fines are an obstacle, we do administer fines if insurance is not used and device is damaged beyond repair, but we're not then able to not provide another device for a student, which is another reason why a student might end up having multiple devices. And also the idea of withdrawing students, keeping devices, it is also not a criminal matter. That's the other piece. It's just, it is a contract matter or it would be a civil dispute around one of the devices that are about $250 each. So in terms of that, so we rely heavily on the relationship and rely on home visits for students to pick up those missing devices.
So in addition to those spreadsheets that we have, definitely looking to have recording software that we all can see and use and also other assets, looking at our district laptops would also benefit from asset tracking tool.
So we have a desire to state, we'd like to create consistent procedures for the deployment and collection across the district, say every building following the same path. We'd like to train our staff in the use of a new asset management tool. This would be a database and application and something that would marry up well with data from Tyler and data from Google that we could generate reports from. And this would promote consistency, as I mentioned, and improved reporting. Today, the recording is very manual and time consuming. The asset management tool can use both for student chromebooks and other district technology. This was something else we were looking for, the idea that it wouldn't just be for chromebooks, but we could use it for teacher laptops and other technology assets. And certainly improve fidelity to processes to reduce our losses, which is the goal and this is one of the advantages that we'd move in this direction.
So to answer our desire to state, one of the things we did is, Dr. Pauli asked us to work together, was we kind of sought out who might be able to help us and give us a fair, unbiased opinion of where we are and what we might want to consider. So when I was in Hazelwood, I worked with this company, M and J. And they came in and did actually audit the entire technology department. And it was very comprehensive audit. And to that end, we were able to save some money as a result of the audit that they did. In addition to that, before we selected this company in Hazelwood, we did some digging to see what type of experience this company had. Some of the members of this team, particularly the managing partner, worked for Baxter Card and was a consultant as well for Monsanto. And the work with Baxter Card, they managed 25 project managers. So we look at the projects such as what we're trying to unfold in the asset management with chromebooks, making sure that we know where they are, thought that M and J would be good to come in and give us an unbiased opinion of where we are. To that end, M and J identified five possible solutions, those vendors as well as products that we might use. And also getting some support from other stakeholders, but we're very diligent with interviewing some of our office professionals as well as other identified individuals across the district and the multiple buildings. So we did IT department and M and J evaluated those offerings and chose Incendio Q as our preferred vendor as well as product. Next slide, I believe, or a few slides after that, the next slide, we'll talk about the other vendors. So in order for us to see the implementation, we also strongly endorse M and J as I can remember as well as partner. Based off of the work that M and J did with our building, property as well as staff and then pulling those vendors together that dollars raised and that they had, we thought would be good for them to continue to work with us and train the staff in our buildings. Also documenting processes for the staff so we can have clearly defined processes across all buildings and all buildings are doing the same thing. And then work with IT on the reporting and then supporting and troubleshooting at the start phases of the project.
So the vendors that we evaluated with M and J notified and we got four responses from them. Incendio Q consistently outperformed the others and also came in with the most competitive price. The pricing was a little different from vendor to vendor, but overall, this is off and stacked up. And we were most impressed again with Incendio Q and also of course with their competitive pricing, 15, 20, 28.
So M and J did submit a statement of work or quote for implementation service which entails 90 hours for annual for training, 80 hours for user manuals as well as documentation that we will need to ensure that we have a standardized process across the board. And we believe that with this, we'll be better able to track those assets and maybe rely some of the dollars that we were losing for those chromebooks that are not recovered and reefered, remember that, that I mentioned earlier.
Dr. Green, you mentioned 300 to 400 chromebooks that are lost. You mentioned 10% or 900. The other 400 to 500 devices, Ian.
Some of those devices have worked with the long term.
The 900 are essentially a rough approximation of the number of chromebooks annually that drop out of circulation, that become unusable, unusable, either because they're lost or because they're broken or because they have some other critical problem on them that prevents us from using them anymore. So we can't, maybe they're not broken beyond repair, but the repair would either be too time consuming or too costly for that model chromebook. So that accounts for 900. And of that 900, again, at least consistently around 300 are just going to disappear, presumably with a student. And we believe that with M and J's help, scaling up this product and having a more rigorous method of managing and tracking our assets, we can make up for the difference by reducing that loss. Because if you take a possible chromebook and say that we're losing 300 annually, then this is a great, this is a great opportunity for us and we will save money in the long run, even in year one, if we're aggressive about reducing that number, we could potentially save money.
Because the cost of the new chromebook at this point?
Two fifty, right around two fifty.
And we're buying 900 every school year?
Actually, we're buying a few more than that. And one of the things I have to keep in mind, this is another important point, we have, currently, we have, this school year, we have about 1,000 to 1,200 chromebooks that are obsolete, but we're using them anyway because they still work. They're obsolete because they're so old, Google will not update the operating system on them. And because Google won't update the operating system, they cannot be used for online testing. That's why they're obsolete. We push those down to the lowest rates possible to ensure still that students have advice because we are a one to one district. And so because these commercials are so old, we see annually that the older ones are also very prone to breaking and then dropping out of service. So yes, to sustain this program, we do need to buy around 1,000 or more chromebooks annually. And that's because we always need more than one chromebook per student because we will have so many in the repair desks, we will have so many where people cannot find them. And students will come in and say, I can't find my chromebook. We have to do that. We can't let this precedent over. It is the tool of education. It's their library, it's their workbook, it's their textbook, it's everything. So yes, unfortunately, as a one to one program, one to one district, we need 9,000 chromebooks every school year.
And the most common repairs, Fred, that we're seeing?
Probably screens and keyboards.
Like what types of issues?
Well, crank screen. And our team at the health desk, kudos to them, they are cranking out repairs all year long. I think this past school year, they repaired around 1,200 chromebooks. That means they got a chromebook back into service for us. And that's so essential to sustaining this program. This summer, as you know, I have the staff going around the district, collecting the chromebooks that have returned, cleaning them up, wiping them down, updating them, evaluating what's broken and what's not. I have right now over 1,000 chromebooks at the health desk that need to be repaired. And we need to get all of them repaired before the start of school in August, or we will not have enough. And I have an order out there for your approval tonight to buy more chromebooks because we absolutely need them. We are a one to one district and to stay that way, we have to buy more chromebooks. But we also need to improve our asset tracking and that's why we're here tonight to talk to you about this.
And board members, when we established the one to one back in 2016, one of our principals was the lead developer of the process, that's Mr. Boleo Ewing, that moved into a principalship. And we also know that we're, devices are most likely to be misplaced or walk away. He's also up here at Britner High School. We've also had a level of turnover. So when we look at greater fidelity to our process, we've also had a changeover in people. We've had some drift from when the original processes were developed back in 2016. And so this would be getting re-grounded in a new process with a better tool to help us better track the investment.
Well, Fred, as they say, it's a cost of doing business, even though I don't like really the cost, but I know it's our business. And I know we moved that way with all deliberations. And we have to support, I get that, I understand. And we have to support, I get that, I understand. I was just curious on how many Chromebooks we would actually need to advance with that. It's surprising, it might be startling, but it's a fact.
So our recommendation is that we partner with M&amp;J Technologies and purchase and deploy Incident IQ in August before the start of school in all buildings at a total cost of forty-five thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and four cents.
Madam President, I would like to make that-
I have a question, it's not so much of a question, so, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question about the actual company. So I know that, I was just wondering in the interview process or the kind of scope being out of the company, if you were able to get an assessment, like actual data on the success of their implementation? Because I think it's one thing to like think of a process and train people on it, but again, to your point, the fidelity of it, like did it actually save the school district any money? Like was there hard data on, you know, let's say we have the problem, this client had five hundred missing Chromebooks and by the end of school year or the following school year, they were able to lower that to two fifty or something like that? Like was there, because again, I think sometimes what happens is like there's this great idea, especially being, I'm sure they partner with school districts and things like that, but like, I think the people get lost in like the process. And so just ensuring that this company understands education. And so, anyway, hopefully my question makes sense, but just wondering if they have the data on their success.
So this would be evidence of impact?
Yes, so my knowledge of the company and working with this company in Hazelwood, some other similar projects, not Chromebook managers, that sit around looking at that technology department as a whole and seeing where we could, if we were to save repurchase dollars so that we could purchase additional Chromebooks. So we were able to realize some of those factors and save money. And we were able to supervise Chromebooks for all of our students in Hazelwood. And some of the other best practices we put forward, our CFO at the time ended up looking at some of those and ended up saving dollars with other, I guess I would say, other resources that fall into the technology department. This company here is part of the partners, we met with the managing partner. And that's the person that we worked with. And as I said, for most of the work is in corporate, not necessarily in schools. And as I talked with him in the interview in Hazelwood, I'd have to say Mastercard and Monsanto, but we're working with all the project managers that they did, worked with and trained them on how to implement some of those projects. That's why I'm here. When I saw this, the number of Chromebooks that we were losing and compared that to the, let's say the dollars that we were losing, I thought maybe we'd have to find these out and then out. So we're looking at maybe three hundred Chromebooks losing here at seventy-five thousand dollars. But we have to replace those Chromebooks, so you have to buy those three hundred Chromebooks again. So you lost seventy-five thousand, you have to spend another seventy-five thousand. So how much did you go to lose when you're replacing this, it's more than seventy-five thousand?
And if the question is also like specific dollars, specific information, we can reach out to the managing partner and I can share that information with the board. So evidence of impact, what does that look like in terms of dollars and cents? We can ask him to speak on Monsanto Mastercard, what is the specific evidence?
Yeah, because I think, you know, I totally agree, I'm not disagreeing with needing an asset management track, I mean, that's for sure. I think I'm just a little weird, even, I feel like that almost set me back a little bit further because hearing like they worked with Mastercard and these sort of adult work, not like children, you know, because the process also includes the students. So I would feel, I don't know, I would feel a bit more comfortable with a company who's worked with students or children, you know, has an understanding of a process that would be implemented across, because this is a process that's going to affect everybody, right? So, but maybe I'm overthinking it or something, but it does feel like it's a significant investment for basically a consultant coming in, doing an evaluation, seeing what's, what our current process or lack thereof is, and then offering a process, walking us through it, trailing teachers, being, I'm assuming also then being kind of on call to help. That's, that was another question I was going to have, was like, how long do we kind of have their partnership for, for this amount?
So that was four hundred and seventy hours.
The number of eighty and ninety?
Oh, okay.
So it was four hundred and seventy hours. And I guess I would say that this company has already looked at some of the processes we have in place. And that was one of the reasons why we thought that it would be good to streamline and have a consistent process across all of our school buildings. And not, you do it this way over here, you do it that way over there.
You know, it looks like the way it's gotten in different buildings, and looking at the results, which is certainly something we did over the past several years, the opportunity is there to get to more consistent practices following those in the buildings where we recovered most Chromebooks. And this is where M&amp;J, they're very aware of the discrepancies we have across the district. And by honing in on those buildings with the best results and making sure those practices are followed in the buildings that are behind, we think will drive us forward more successfully. Their experience is with working with, you know, people in corporate America, sure. But here, they're mostly working with our office professionals. And not so much with teachers and certainly not with students, but with office professionals who are responsible for primarily the leads and the distribution and the recovery and the day-to-day interactions, transactions of receiving a Chromebook or delivering a working book. And recording that is just a matter of time.
You know, as a breakdown of costs too, this, so the tool, the Incident IQ, that's an annual cost, is that correct? That's a subscription cost per year?
Yes, please.
The M&amp;J costs would be a one-time cost?
So I have a question in regards to the training. Is the assumption, I'm making the assumption that the training is going to occur virtually? And I'm just saying that because it says it requires no travel expenses? Or is that, are they including our whole entire district that's being covered by the contract? And they're talking about something else for travel expenses?
Yeah, I believe that that means no, um-
It's a local company, so it's local, right?
And then the other question I have, so the document that we have for the cost of Incident IQ has a total price of twenty-four thousand seven hundred two dollars and sixty-seven cents?
Right.
But in the PowerPoint, it has fifteen thousand eight hundred twenty-
We're not, we're not buying the ticketing. There's a line item there for travel ticketing, Incident ticketing is small? I think it's around eight thousand?
You're not doing the subscription?
For the ticketing?
Yeah, subscription, yeah. So we're not doing that?
No.
And so then, we would anticipate this one-time fee of three thousand dollars, one hundred fifty, would change when we came there every year?
That's one-time fee as well, yes. So the annual subscription for incident would just be that, half on both? Which I think is, I don't know, that's twelve thousand, something like that?
Yes, ticketing is what's eight thousand, and then the ass platform with assets, subscription is what's twelve.
Right, and that's the, that would be the third cost.
This is the garden.
We don't have a motion.
Oh, sorry, finish the motion here. I'll, you've started and I can work with that. Good, that comes.
Madam President, I move that we partner with M&amp;J Technologies and purchase and deploy Incident IQ in August before the start of school in all buildings at a total cost of forty-five thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and four cents.
A second. The draw? Yes. Mrs. Luitas-Cavall? I see that one. Got the thumbs?
Yes.
Okay, Marla, I do have another question. Sorry, this is already budgeted for, like we have, where's the money coming from? Let me just see.
Question around budget?
Yes, like where it's coming from, it's already-
So this would be in a technology account. This specific item is not called out because we don't want to assume that you're going to approve it. But there's a technology account that could assume this cost. And that's based on the timing, right? So the fact that we're bringing this to you, M&amp;J, I didn't bring it to you back in June is why this was not specifically built into the budget?
Yes. So I will vote yes as well. I do want to say that I would like some data on how this contract goes. Like are we seeing some significant changes with it? Because at the end of the day, yes, there's training that's happening, but it's still only as good as us implementing it. So if it's, after we implement this and we're not seeing any changes, anything, I would not be wanting to renew a contract.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Three point zero four, I'll say yes.
So Board members, we have a guest with us tonight also, Mr. Jones. He's completing his internship still, he's got some remaining hours. Mr. Jones is now in the Berkeley Gardens School District where he's an assistant principal. And I'm to come up with Dan and the gentleman.
Good evening, everybody, good to see you again.
So Board members, we have a number of policies that'll be coming to you. Dan is going to speak on the specific updates, and I'm just going to give a little background on each of the edits. Our process is to give the Board a heads up before we're seeking your approval. So to be clear, we're not asking for your approval of any of these edits tonight. These, a majority of these items will be coming to you at the August Business Meeting as edits, because for these six items, we have five of these already on the books. And so we're just looking to update language. There is one, the first item, item KC is a new policy that has to do with community involvement. Mike, you can go to KC. So Policy KC, this is community involvement and decision-making. When we have a policy that is not on the books, there's a first reading, second reading, and approval process. So first reading of this policy will come to you August work session. Second reading and approval will come to you at August Business. This is a required policy based on statute that we need to have on the books before students begin. This is reinforcing, excuse me, community involvement in decision-making. And there's always so many clear whys in the, why these edits are coming to you now based on statutory change. This Policy KC is based on the level of contentiousness that there's been in schools the last several years. Some communities making the argument that they feel they are locked out or blocked out of decisions at public school level. So this is policy language that all districts in Missouri are being required to have based on statute to reinforce the fact that schools, public schools are community schools. It's connected to the expectation that community be able to add an item to the Board agenda which is going to come in a separate edit. It's a direct result of the discord in the state. The Board recognizes that many residents of the district may be specially qualified to assist and advise the district because of their training, experience, or personal characteristics. And the Board encourages them to take an active part in school affairs. Over the last several years, again, public school districts being somewhat of an island, being not completely connected to the beliefs of some community members, we don't have anything on the books that specifically calls that out. So Policy KC, this is language from MSBA that we're required to approve. So the first reading of it, I would speak on it at the work session in August. And we'd be going over the second reading in the open session and Business Meeting in August and seeking your approval at that point.
Okay, let's move on to Policy BEDL. Mike, if you can click on that for me. Appreciate that. So Policy BEDL has to do with the release of information. And so essentially, it's going to talk about stakeholder access to records upon request, custodian of records, external electronic messaging, board majority transfers, custodian of records, and board member access to records. And so the addition, well, there's going to be a few additions to this policy, so I'm going to go ahead and read those to you. The district believes that local control of public education is best served when district patrons, when district patrons have access to district records that the user works with. The district will make its public records available for inspection and copy upon request and make to the custodian records unless those records are authorized to be closed in accordance with law. So the Board is a lot of point, the custodian of records. In addition, the district will train its one additional employee to serve as custodian records in the absence of the official facility. The custodian records is responsible for overseeing the retention and storage of the district's records and responding to requests for district records required by law. District staff will direct requests for records to the custodian of records whose identity will be made available upon request and will be advertised as the superintendent or designated, determined as appropriate. External messaging messages, this is another addition. If a board member or a member of a district committee subject to Missouri Sunshine law transmits any message to another member that when counting the sender, the majority of the board or committee members receive the message, the message shall also be concurrently transmitted to the custodian of record or the members' district office computer if applicable in the same format. The message shall be considered open record unless it is closed, unless it is a closed record in accordance with the law. And finally, with this policy, board member access. An individual school board member does not have greater access to district records than any other member of the public unless the Board has authorized or the district has provided access to a supportive relation to their service as a board member. The Board is therefore to direct the administration to release records to the Board as a whole or to the individual board member. Pause here for questions?
There's a lot in that edit, and I thank Dan for calling it out. So taking it back a little bit, so custodian of records, again, the why. The number of open records requests, sunshine requests has exploded over the last several years again around politics and education. This would be taking the step of actually putting the name of our custodian of records, Ms. Quinton Woods, into policy. We, the Board, we would also be asking for your approval of Ms. Woods as the custodian of records on consent at the August Board meeting as well. as the custodian of records on consent at the August board meeting as well. This is coming from arguments or complaints about lack of transparency and lack of getting records from districts. And so MSBA is putting this language out and directing us to post the name of the custodian of records as well as to have a backup in the event that Ms. Woods would be absent. We'd be recommending a member of the HRT to serve as the backup to Ms. Woods. Custodian of records is responsible for overseeing the retention and storage of district records. There are federal guidelines around that that require a seven-year period for opening records. And right now, Ms. Woods functions as the custodian of records, she handles the sunshine, sunshine records requests and so on. This would be added into policy. Another big piece that Dan called out that has to do with board members, Mike, if you can go up just a little bit around external electronic messages. So this involves members of the Board of Education. If you transmit a message either by text or email, and there's one more than the, there's the majority of the board, which means four. If you send that message to four members either by text or email, then you would also have to send a copy of that message to our custodian of records because that's sunshine. So that's some reasons for why we do what we do. Board members, if I ever send you a text, I'll never send a group text, right? So I would always send an individual text to board members. That's why we don't give group responses to a text. That's why it's not encouraged to do a group email response. Because now, under this required policy, that message would have to be copied. And Ms. Woods would have to keep a copy of board member communication under this policy, which could then be requested through sunshine requests. And that's where boards can get themselves in trouble because there's communication that starts going back and forth. You know, that applies to individual board member, but specific to this policy, if it's majority of the board, then that's an official record that people can get that. So if there's items that are going back and forth around any kind of topic, just it's not good practice as a board. And then, based on this policy, if we add it, and if something we do that, we're not going to be acting outside of the open record as well. And there could be some concerns with that. So just going a little bit deeper on what is in these edits, it's significant. The board member access, I mean, this is our process now. This is just putting the process into place. Individual board members or the board does not have greater access to district records than any other member of the public unless the board has authorized or the district has provided access to the board member in relation to their board service. Evaluations, right? So the general public does not have access to staff evaluations. And generally, the board does not have access to staff evaluations either. It's just putting that process into practice unless the board votes or directs the administrations to release specific records to the board as a part of... So again, Mike, it's from MSBA. Any questions around that, sir?
I just have a quick question about the, which I think I know the answer to. I just want to clarify. So there's some like kind of learning groups, I think, for school board members. So it's members, but they're from different districts. So that wouldn't count as the sunshine. So like, for example, I'm reaching out to the U City, a couple of school board members from there to talk about collaborating on policy edits for MSBA or our position on something. I send a group a text message to say, hey, we're going to try to get together with U City members or whatever. Only two people respond, and then two people from their board. That, like that communication would be sunshine. I mean, I'm just wondering.
Board member or a member of a district committee, so I feel like the calendar committee, transmits any message to enough members that when counting the sender, the majority of the board or committee members receive the message. So, I mean, it's four.
Is the sender considered?
Within this, yeah, within this board. Yeah, sender is one. Center counts. And so this is specific to each organization. So if that's it, it would be... I mean, if it's you and three U City board members, I wouldn't think that would apply. But if it's you emailing the entire written report, then you have to do it here.
Yeah, because sometimes we have like, again, those learning communities and things like that for school board. I know we get... So yeah, so that all would count as being sent to all of us.
That's the way.
Yeah, okay.
There are no further questions. We'll move on to Policy DD, annual budget. All right. So essentially, what has happened with Policy DD is budget planning and adoption has been combined into a policy. It has to deal with involving the stakeholders. The superintendent to serve as the district budget officer. And we'll also speak about a June 7 deadline for tentative budget proposal, basically before approval, before the end of the fiscal year. And then there'll be an information chair that gives about Title I comparability, which has to do with district-wide salary schedule, the equivalence among school personnel, the equivalence among schools in resources, and the annual comparability study submitted to DESI. So that's sort of the overview of what you're going to hear about. I'll take it to the grandeur of information now. So this is the combined budget planning and adoption policy. Budget planning and preparation is a continuing process that must involve individuals who have knowledge of the educational needs of the community and who can provide accurate data about the financial potential of the district. Members of the board, citizens, students, and professionals, and support staff members should be involved in the planning process, which culminates in the preparation of the budget documents. The superintendent will establish procedures to seek input on budgetary needs from the appropriate stakeholders. The board designates the superintendent to serve as the district's budget officer. The budget officer will be directed at budget planning and preparation. When creating the budget, the budget officer will consider the priorities established by the board and seek input from appropriate individuals about the needs of the district. The budget must include prudent fund balance positions. The budget officer will present to the board tentative budget proposal for the following year, no later than June 7, unless sufficient financial information is not available at that time to propose even a tentative budget. The budget officer will make revisions as directed by the board and will present the final budget proposal to the board for approval before the new fiscal year begins, as provided by law.
So I'll go a little bit further with that at that point. So what this policy does is to make the budget development process a more ongoing process. Right now, we have a budget hearing in June. After the budget has been developed, there's a requirement to hold a budget hearing to invite comment from the public prior to making the recommendation. These changes, again, recommended by MSBA, strikes out that budget hearing. That would go away. And instead, all throughout budget development is an ongoing process. We adopt some of that already, starting in January. White has a place for an ongoing budget update to the board. So we do work to make it collaborative. The elimination of the budget hearing and then putting in policy a hard deadline for the presentation of the tentative budget, that hard deadline being June 7, where the budget needs to be presented to the board. And then, as is always, we have to get that budget approved by the board before June 30, which is the end of the fiscal year. Title I comparability, Dan got into that just a little bit. We have to make sure that we are providing comparable resources and service across buildings. And the policy spells it out specifically. The test is, do we have services that are familiar across buildings? The way that's called out is, do we have a district-wide salary schedule? Or are we paying teachers different amounts at different buildings and so on? We do have district-wide salary schedules that cut across all buildings. Do we have a level of consistency amongst staff? We do have a level of consistency amongst staff, whether it be teachers, support staff, or administrators. We monitor caseloads. We monitor class sizes. And we work to have them be consistent across buildings. And we have consistent materials across buildings. So we do a curriculum adoption that cuts across all buildings. Now, there are, it is possible for a principal based on site-based management, working with their leadership team, to purchase some additional material at their discretion. However, each principal in each building has the right inability to do that. So Title I comparability, are we providing equitable resources as a test? And so how does DESI check in with us on that? That comparability study is covered through a thing that's called the Items Not Leaving Checklist that we have to do each spring with DESI. Check off yes or no with show edits.
Yeah, we'll move on to Policy DJF now. This has to do with purchasing. So there's several additions here. I'll just highlight those. Most of it is to do with competitive purchasing. So appropriate informal methods for purchasing under fifty thousand dollars. There has to be formal methods for anything beyond fifty thousand dollars. The district selects lowest of the best bids. District reserves the right to waive all or parts of bids. The district awards contracts to responsible contractors. When deemed necessary, products and services may be purchased by competitive negotiation rather than through competitive bids. And the superintendent is directed to create purchasing procedures and processes that allow the district to benefit, address unusual situations, or purchase from frequent providers.
So what DJF is, this, you know, where does this coming from? The districts have, you know, an office of federal money through ESSR dollars trying to streamline a purchasing process because we are coming up towards September of 2024. And districts are getting concerned about spending that federal money. So it's an effort to streamline and gain efficiency there. They talk about purchasing co-ops. We're already a part of a purchasing co-op. It's through Education Plus. What that means is Education Plus, a number of vendors, they apply, they bid to be a part of this purchasing co-op, which guarantees the lowest price. It takes some of the work away from districts. We don't engage in competitive negotiation. We follow a bidding process. Unless it's this purchasing co-op through Education Plus. And being a member of the board at EdPlus and also the president of the board at one point, the way that works was the vendors would have to guarantee this price. So the price that they are offering through the co-op, if we found out that they were offering a lower price outside of that to get business, then they immediately get dropped from the co-op. That's the stiff to make sure that the pricing in the co-op was legit. So competitive purchasing through the co-op with Education Plus. We have access to that and to all districts that are part of Education Plus. This is just calling that out in policy.
Questions? Yeah, I think we have one more Policy IC, and I'll follow on that.
So Policy IC, Mike. So this is the school calendar policy, board members. It was mentioned when we were talking about AMI earlier in the year. As shared, you know, we had the AMI plan, and I made that decision to go with the traditional weather day, which, based on the approval, I will not be doing moving forward. But what was surfaced through some conversations with some community members was a lack of clarity around hours and days. The number of days was not mentioned anywhere in policy. The thousand and forty-four hours, that's the minimum DESI requirement. When DESI moved to hours away from days some years ago, that opened the door to allow for modified schedules. That's where four-day school weeks came in. Districts were meeting the thousand and forty-four hours per year, but they were doing it in a four-day school. Just as an aside, there's legislation that was filed last year by Senator Doug Beck from South County to move back towards DESI, calculating days, no longer hours. Because there's 120 districts across the state that have moved to four-day weeks. And there's growing opposition to that. Senator Beck, his bill would go to a minimum of 174 days, striking the reference hours. Going back to why for the edit, we only had a mention of hours. But board members, when you approve a calendar, the number of days is called out. Board approves a calendar with a minimum number of student attendance days of 171, minimum number of staff days of 181. And then the teachers that they were with tonight, either brand-new teachers or teachers new to the district, they have a 186-day calendar because it captures the new employee orientation time. So this edit would be putting in the specific reference to days in the policy. Now, there's another part of it too, because there was some conversation when I called that traditional day. Could we just forgive that day and not pick it up? Mike, if you could go down to the bottom of this policy, please. Should a traditional implement weather day be used? Because policies cut across, as I said, for next year based on the approval of the AMI virtual plan. I would not be calling it a traditional day. By five years in the future, there may be a different belief or direction. Should a traditional implement weather day or days be used? Each day must be made up on a day not already scheduled as a student attendance day. So that could be a day at the back end of the calendar where students normally were scheduled to be off. That could be during spring break. That could be during winter break. And so the language of a day not normally scheduled for school is, that's why it's in policy. And again, where did this come from? There was some confusion, and it was actually after the chance, and I had to get involved and put our brains together a little bit around the number of hours and the number of days and so on. This is clarifying, the number of days approved and that making up the day is not intended to be made.
So based on the existing policy and we're transitioning to all AMI days, is it necessary to have this in here about the thirty-six minute hours?
So this next year, we're going to be all virtual. None of the policy could cut across in years. I think it's just a, it's just a potential. If, like, we're committed to surveying the community each year around the AMI plan for as long as DESI allows us to do virtual days. I just, if we approve this now, then we've got the option if ever we go to a three-in-three that the community schools have. Is there an immediate need right now? Not so much based on virtual, but perhaps in community.
But technically, our calendar does not include the thirty-six minute hours. Our calendar technically does not include the thirty-six minute hours.
It does. It does. We're required by state guidelines to include that above and beyond. The minimum number of hours regardless if we use AMI days or not. Why the calendar at the bottom says greater than...
Yeah, I understand that.
Thousand and forty-four.
The challenge that comes up is when the community reads this policy, it's contradicting. It makes it seem like our calendar has this in there, which it does, but technically, we're all, yeah. I imagine this is going to come up. Let's see.
So we had that same confusion when this came up and had some conversation with other superintendents. This was a few years ago, other superintendents in the state, because it seemed contradictory. The state was allowing AMI days, but still requiring a minimum of thirty-six hours in addition to the minimum. So we always aim for a thousand eighty to get to that thirty-six plus one, one thousand forty-four. And typically, our high school is really close to the margins based on the...
This is a perfect example of why we do this. Before, we're asking for your approval. That allows us this week for me to be completely clear with Lisa and the whole board so you know exactly what you're approving, based on these questions. I'm better at writing. I'll put this in writing onto the board on Friday and be completely clear. We actually have one other policy, BDDH. Dan moved east and he went to his new position before we made this setup. So Mike, if you could go to BDDH. I said there's a companion policy to KC that involves community participation at board meetings. So now, community members have the ability, not just to make a comment during public comments, but community members have the ability to add an item to the board meeting agenda, to push an item to the board so that there is conversation. um, to push an item to the board so that there is conversation. So, um, when this came out, we actually worked with, uh, Michelle Basie to understand, um, all the components of this, of what does this look like in practice? So does that mean a community member can come in before a meeting, "I want you to talk about libraries." "I want you to talk about," any number of topics that, um, a, a community member could ask the board to talk about in public session. And so we were working to get some clarity around that. I think Michelle provided some clarity. So Mike, if you could go down to the yellow edits. So. Sorry. Any member of the public who wishes to have an item placed on the agenda will present this request in writing using the form. Uh, there's a form that goes along with this that's created by MSBA. And complete the forms, um, and submit it to the superintendent. The request must be submitted, uh, to pursuant to board policy and received by business day. So pursuant to board policy, for example, uh, board member or a community member could request a closed session conversation, open session, or could request personnel records or something along those lines that would not be pursuant to board policy. Uh, but if there's a written request that comes in five business days prior to the scheduled meeting, then the item will appropriately be placed on the agenda, which would be in the open business meeting agenda. Board reserves the right to impose reasonable restrictions on the number of items to be considered, the number of spokespersons, and the speaking time of spokespersons appearing before the board. The public comment criteria are very appropriate. That's a five-minute limit. Um, that's no more than 30 minutes on the topic. And so that's already in place for public comment. It's appropriate for this item as well. Uh, the, uh, if the meeting agenda is spoken, uh, and the board reserves the right to reschedule an item for the next regular business meeting, the board may refuse to address an issue that has not gone through the appropriate, appropriate grievance procedure, uh, meaning a conversation with me in the written process. That's the, that's the grievance procedure before it comes to the board. And the board reserves the right to waive formalities and emergency situations within the limitations of the law. So, uh, emergency situations, that's not called out, but the board needs to be very aware of precedent that gets set. Uh, if it's based on an emergency provision, precedent that you can set by the bottom of one conversation, you need to be consistent with that. So this is a follow-up to KC around community engagement in schools. Uh, and, and this would be calling out the specific process for community adding an item to the, to the, to the board agenda. Uh, just down below this, uh, Mike, if you could go down to the form. Is, uh, has been writtenized. Uh, you can see, uh, confirming that the person is a resident of the district, uh, written description of the agenda. And then, uh, how is the item directly related to district governance or operation? You know, matters of, uh, free speech rights, so First Amendment, it has to be a matter of public concern. This is not connected to, you know, the First Amendment. I'm making the connection that it has to be something that's relevant to district operation. And that's something, again, will set a precedent, um, if these things start to come based on what we determine to be related to district governance or operation. And so then the check on the process is, yes, I met with the superintendent or does he need to discuss the agenda item, uh, or no, I did not? And then who is going to be presenting? So MSBA, I think, did a great job of presenting, providing this one also. So this. So board members, we tried to spread these out, uh, a little bit. Uh, and Dequinda and I talked a little bit about this. Um, in the transition from, uh, Michelle to Dequinda, we did have a little bit of a backlog. We tried to never go beyond, um, three policy edits. So I apologize that we've had a number of them come to you, but there is some urgency. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to three points, there are five construction assets. Mr. Michael, say.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Of course, our mission and vision, uh, it's important for our, to meet our mission and vision, that we have effective, uh, facilities to make that happen. And our facilities should provide best physical environment for learning to occur. And all district schools should provide consistent and equitable environments. I have two updates for you to note. The first is a discussion, or at least an update, uh, around cafeteria addition. Because there is square footage being added to the school as a part of the, um, cafeteria renovation, uh, it has become, uh, necessary for us to also build a storm shelter. And a storm shelter, because we're increasing a, a small amount, uh, would only require occupancy of eighty-six persons. So because, uh, there are a lot of questions that we have around that, we feel at this point it could become necessary for us to pause on construction efforts within the cafeteria until we learn more about the impact that this will have upon us financially, make sure that we make the right decision, uh, before we begin construction at this time.
So this was unexpected. Uh, this was an unexpected, uh, process. And so, uh, as we were having the conversation, we do believe it's in our best interest to explore alternatives before we just go ahead and work with architects to design the storm shelter. And so this could push us back just a little bit on timelines. But in terms of being stewards of the community, we do think this is the, the best option. Is the storm shelter, which would be outside the building, are there other options that we could do to exist, to the existing structure that would be, you know, less than basic, more efficient, and could be explored?
So I just need to learn more.
Oh, no, that's true. Because I would imagine that we have to go back to the designers or architectures for them to redesign, there's a fee for that as well.
That is, that is correct. And so it becomes necessary for us to balance, you know, so, you know, constructing the, um, the storm shelter versus, you know, re-designing the cafeteria to knock out that area, um, the square footage increased. Um, you know, what is the cost of that to, you know, making that decision?
Excellent. My question would be, in our process, where was that gap? So meaning like, who technically would have been responsible for identifying that? We would, because we want to expand in this space, who should have identified that you would have had another code that is coming up? Would that have been the architecture? Would that have been one of the contractors? Would that have been?
That, that was through our architect. And what it was is when our plans were developed and being developed, our architect was following Breckenridge Hills code. We're in, uh, the, the expansion, the renovation was taking, is taking place in renovations. And so followed the code of Breckenridge Hills in order to get those plans completed. Um, once, uh, we, you know, approved for Blockter to do the construction, those plans were then submitted to Breckenridge Hills, uh, for a permit. Breckenridge Hills then informed us that they did not have the capacity uh, to inspect this type of a project, assets that they go to St. Louis County. St. Louis County has that requirement, but Breckenridge Hills did not have that requirement.
So when then did we find this? Did we find this out at the beginning of the project?
It was not at the beginning of the project. So when we, when we first learned about it, we fought with, uh, St. Louis County on that because we are not adding, um, uh, number of students to the, to the school. And so our argument is, you know, you know, we're not adding to the capacity of the school. We're not adding more people to the school. Um, and we were not able to bring that argument. Um, and so we were, we were battling them on that for quite a while, uh, trying to make sure that, that they understood our position, but they did not, uh, they did not let it happen.
Have we gone back to Breckenridge Hills and asked questions? Okay, okay. Just because if we're following Breckenridge, we're in Breckenridge Hills and we're following Breckenridge Hills code, county should be enforcing Breckenridge Hills code. They're just doing the inspections. I would, I guess that's where I'm confused, too.
Because St. Louis County is doing the inspections, we have to follow the, St. Louis County. Um, you know, if Breckenridge Hills had agreed to do the inspections, then we would not have been required to have, have a storm shelter.
Some municipalities have their own plan review and inspection. And they'll handle it up to a certain point, right? Which is, some municipalities don't do it at all. And they accept everything. They send you to St. Louis County for everything. So it's who is ever reviewing that plan becomes the jurisdiction. The authorities have jurisdiction.
I've just, in the past, coming from the construction field, have seen where Breckenridge Hills would go back and fight back with, with, with St. Louis County and say, "We were issuing the variance because they're in our area. We're just asking you to inspect." That's why I was asking this.
Worth of question.
Yes. So I, so this is information, this is a report. Uh, board members, a little bit of a curve ball. I just wanted to get you up to speed around that. But, so we're not reckoning moving forward with storm shelter. We just need more time to explore.
Other questions before we respond? Uh, also, uh, here to speak with you about, uh, HVAC pipe repair at Hooters. So as you know, part of Proposition S. Plan included, uh, replacing, uh, deteriorating, decaying piping at Hooters, uh, which is often springing leaks. We have over the years, I've been able to replace the majority of the piping at Hooters. Um, there, there is a bit of piping that is still need to replace in order to do the complete replacement, um, at this time. So, um, the locations of the remaining pipe could be replaced in the cafeteria, the offices, the lounge, council's offices, and ten classrooms. That's what's left in order to, uh, do complete replacement of that, uh, decaying pipe. Um, that would allow us to replace the supply and return, uh, pipes to each twenty-one unit ventilators, uh, which is significant. Uh, and then also it would include re-insulating that pipe so that you don't get contamination issues. Um, we have replaced the worst of the worst up to this point. Um, but of course, you know, this last remaining piece of, uh, section of pipe, it's important, uh, it's also important for safety because we just don't know when, you know, we're going to get that done, um, at this time. To complete that important repair, but also because it was called out in Proposition S., that is something that we need to do. Uh, Wegman has, uh, superior knowledge of our systems and has designed, uh, that, what the repairs would, it would entail. And they propose $108,000 to complete that project. And therefore, I'm recommending, uh, the Board of Education accept Wegman's proposal of $108,000 to complete those pipe repairs at Hooters. Have any questions?
Well, have you done the first full start?
That cannot, because we still have to order the materials once it's, if it's broken. Um, and so the goal would be a portion, uh, during fall break and remaining during winter break. Because in order to, uh, make this repair, it's on that two-pipe system, you had to completely drain and shut down the system. Um, so we would want to do the majority during fall break to finish up anything during winter break because we wouldn't want anything cruising, uh, in the cold.
Other questions? Okay, I will call for a vote. Mrs. Emery, guess come on. I'm sorry.
As a case, I will make the motion to accept Wegman's proposal of $108,000 to complete the HVAC pipe repairs at Hooters. Second. No, no. Dr. Allen Wilson? Yes. Dr. Allen Wilson? Yes. Mrs. Emery, guess come on. Yes. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
And I will go, yes.
Thank you all.
We will move on to three points, there are five personnel renovations.
Please, board members?
Here to present, I am Dr. A. D. Page, the senior head of the board. I hope that there's questions. How to, uh...
I'll have a question about first. I guess they got a question about what we're doing. Number sixty-seven is doing jazz band. Jazz band has been in the past an extra duty because it's been before school. I understand as of recently, it's not going to be before school. Now it's going to be put in the school day.
Previously, jazz band was before the school day, but Jazz band teacher previously actually got a plant, got a time off later on, and then it was really just shifting his schedule to start recruiting based on his class. So the jazz band extra duty was really for all of the provision and the forms of practices that they were doing outside of that class. Does that make sense?
So, okay, so there should be, at least, you know, part of why they did one before school was because of transportation and practices and things like that. That's why I understand was put within the school day.
So previously, some of the history I had was prior, they couldn't meet the student's scheduling demands because those students who were specifically one jazz band, it helped them meet all their other scheduling needs from the day before school was part of that. And now, speaking of that, they were able to move that during the school day and meet all the scheduling needs or requests of those students in jazz band. Actually, it felt like they could potentially build a class more so if it was offered in the day as some students did not want to start at the school day or something.
So there's this extra duty thing could be just for the events that they don't play?
Yeah. And in addition to practices that they can help add to that.
I'm sorry, Dr. Almosen, I should really, can you remind me again for all of the non-written letter of intent votes, they go, I know they go through similar training, background checks and all of that kind of stuff.
That's what I mean with policy review.
Okay.
We would, if that was activity department, make sure that they can do it before their first day of practice.
Yeah, okay. My question was about the, they have a, they have a contract or something that they have to...
Well, it's not exactly a contract. It's because they're, it's not certified position. It's somewhat at-will. So they have a letter agreement that we are essentially counting you for this task, and this is the competition. And it's similar to other support staff positions where they could essentially dedicate to this name.
Other questions? Second question.
Madam President, I approve that we accept recommendations one through eighty-eight, personnel, Department of Personnel Department as presented.
Mrs. Gar?
Yes.
Dr. Almosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Emery-Gesman?
Yes.
Mr. E?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to three point zero seven. Board member comments?
I always have something. Madam President, I would, I'd like to take this opportunity publicly to thank several of our senior staff members that are here for what they've stepped forward and done. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Green for stepping up, stepping forth and taking over the operation of our high schools to the best principle. I deeply appreciate that. I think that's probably the best principle we can give to the high schools at this time. And thank you very much for doing this, Mike, and for our case. Second of all, Madam President, I've been, I've been around long enough to know that the summertime is very, very short and is very busy for our maintenance department and the projects thereof. And I know in the past, Mike Whelan has had his hands full in a lot of things that he's done. And I think with what we are tackling, we, meaning the royal we, is Mike Smith and Dwight, they have probably taken on two to three times the things that Mike Whelan has ever dreamed of taking on. I, I can't even really list everything. He has probably twenty or thirty things or more. Mike wouldn't share that with me because he doesn't, he doesn't want to realize how many things he has going on. But I'd like to thank both of these gentlemen for, for the amount of projects that they've taken on in this very short summer. And we know the summers are getting shorter and shorter as, as we put on more things, camps and, and summer schools and all this stuff, the expos. So I really appreciate you guys taking on the challenges of doing this. So Mr. Smith, thank you very much for, for everything you've done with all this. These projects is just monumental. And last, last of all, even though she's looking at my kitty computer over there. I would thank you for leading us every board meeting and grounding this board in thought and deep. I really do appreciate your effort. That's all.
I just wanted to say thank you to our trauma team for last week and hitting the ground running when our students need it. And whether that be family of individuals, whether that be our students that are here on the campus. It was a rough week for lots of people, so I can't imagine being those social workers, those counselors, those admin that were in buildings trying to explain to kids. As adults, we don't get it. And to have a kid try to figure it out. So thank you to that team.
I'll certainly echo those statements. Just to be in a district where you are so responsive and be in place regardless of it's what day of the week it is, you know, a lot of times people tend to think like it's Monday through Friday, just run up school hours. But I most definitely will say that one of the things that, I should have said this tonight. Most definitely, being in a district where our central office staff, our teachers, our families, everyone is very responsive to tragedies and traumas that happen in our district, but in a very respectful way. And just most definitely being there for each other to go through that healing process. And I think that's what continues to make district, our written or school district be a family because we are responsive in those spaces. Everybody takes on a lot. And just keep in mind that you don't have to try to do all of this alone. And so when we as board members are asking you, you know, is there something we can do? We are sincerely asking you because we truly appreciate, and I'm speaking for myself, but also the board, we truly appreciate your work and dedication that goes beyond just the classroom from an academic perspective.
We had an administrator that was out of town, being engaged with her team, just says a lot for the individuals that we have employed here.
We move on to our consent agenda items.
Madam President, I approve that we accept consent agenda items four point zero one through four point zero four as presented.
Mrs. Gar?
Yes.
Almosen?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I vote, oh, yes.
Sorry, sorry.
Miss Smith, there?
We move on to five point zero one, looking for a motion to convene in closed session. I'd like to make the motion to reconvene in closed session per State Statute six one zero zero two one for the purpose of the discussion of agenda items.
So.
Mrs. Gar?
Yes.
Dr. Almosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Emery-Gesman?
Yes.
Mr. E?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I vote yes.